Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is November 17th, 2021. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation to pledge allegiance by Councilmember Hayden.
As we begin to anticipate the excitement of the holidays, let us give thanks to our families and for our community. Let us embrace the power of giving and how a few kind words provide so much healing. And remember this from Corinthians, "Each of you should give what you have decided in your heart to give, not reluctantly or under compulsion; for God loves a cheerful giver." Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Cosdine.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Madam City Clerk, do we have a council member requesting to appear remotely?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Nelson.
Is there a motion to allow Councilmember Nelson to appear remotely?
Motion to approve Councilmember Nelson appearing remotely.
Second.
Any discussion? See, a non-Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Okay.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, changes to the agenda is item five. Are there any changes we want to make to the agenda? I do have one item. At the request of Councilmember Nelson, we're going to remove item 11B. Apparently she's still waiting on some information that she hasn't received yet, so she would like to remove this item and put it on her next voting meeting in December.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented with the elimination of item 11B.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Next item is item six, recognitions and achievements. Six A is 2021 Utility of the Future Award. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, members of City Council, ladies and gentlemen. This next item brings me great pleasure to bring to your attention, and that is your Cape Coral Utility System has been recognized once again within its industry peers as being one of the best that there is in the business. And this particular year, the Water Environment Federation Utility of the Future Joint Recognition Program has selected our Utilities Department for, not once, but the second time in four years, as a utility of the future for the fine job that it does in providing us clean drinking water and processing our water treatment to the point where we can reuse that water on our lawns and so forth. And so I'd like to ask the Utilities Department Director, Mr. Jeff Pearson, and his staff to come forward to the podium for a few remarks.
Thank you, Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. Back in May of this year, we submitted an application for the Utilities of the Future Award. We had the assistance of Pro One Pro Media, Kevin, who's actually back in the back recording the meeting. He helped us develop a video so we would have a chance at earning the award. And we found out later this summer that we actually did win the award. And in October, at the WEF Tech Conference, we were given the plaque and a flag that says Utility of the Future Today. And at this time, I would just like to bring up Ron Cavallieri. He is the president of the Florida Water Environment Association here in Florida. And also, I would like to invite Pat Long and any of his staff at the water reclamation facility to come up and be recognized as well. Ron?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. Again, Ron Cavallieri with FWEA. The Water Environment Federation is a not-for-profit technical and educational organization of 30,000 individual members and 75 affiliated member associations representing water quality professionals around the world. Since 1928, WEF and its members have been dedicated to protecting public health and the environment. The Florida Water Environment Association is a member association of WEF. Our vision is a clean and sustainable water environment for Florida's future generations. The FWEA is dedicated to promoting a clean and sustainable water environment by supporting and uniting our members with the public through public awareness and outreach, providing professional development and networking opportunities, and creating alliances to promote sound, science-based public policy. The Utility of the Future Today Recognition Program honors forward-thinking, innovative water utilities that are providing resilient, value-added service to communities, particularly in community engagement, watershed stewardship, and recovery of resources such as water, energy, and nutrients. Innovation and technology are foundational criteria for this recognition and are the basis for providing distinction between well-run utilities and those going beyond the traditional operational practices toward visionary performance. Since 2016, the partnership has honored 183 utilities across the nation, meeting the criteria of the Utility of the Future Today program. And yes, the City of Cape Coral has won the award twice. And the City of Cape Coral has an abundance of water available from multiple sources, like many public utilities in Florida. However, the challenge is that most of that water is replenished by rainfall that is only available for a portion of the year. The city is in a subtropical climate, which is characterized by a distinct dry season and wet season, and is further complicated as the highest demands for water use are during the driest months of the year, from October through May, when many seasonal residents and tourists come to the city. So the City Utilities Department has been at the forefront of providing innovative solutions to its water resources planning and has embraced an "all water is one water" approach in its utility planning efforts. The "one water" approach considers the urban water cycle as a single integrated system and recognizes all urban water supplies as resources, including surface water, groundwater, freshwater, and brackish groundwater, seawater, stormwater, wastewater, reclaimed water, and improved storage opportunities, all of which the Utilities Department has in its plan. The city has been highly successful in these efforts and is very well-deserved in the Utility of the Future Award. So on behalf of WEF and FWA, I'm very pleased to present this award to the City of Cape Coral.
Yeah, Mr. Pearson, I want to congratulate you and your department, all your employees. This is a perfect example of great leadership, great employees, and proven policies. It's the reason that you get awards like this, so I just wanted to congratulate you and your employees. Thank you for work well done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of November 3rd, 2021?
No move. Got it.
Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Item eight is citizens' input. Maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. Anyone who wishes to participate, citizens' input will be utilizing the podium to the left in front of the double doors.
Hi, my name is Monica Higgins. First of all, I'd like to start out by saying thank you. I haven't said the Pledge of Allegiance since I was in school, which was a very long time ago, so thank you for that. I live on Southwest 28th Place, and we've had a situation in our neighborhood for many months now of a huge RV trailer in a driveway, and also at times it's been actually parked in our street, a residential street. I have, or I and my neighbors have contacted code enforcement, we've contacted the police, we've kind of gone back and forth, back and forth. I think the bottom line is, we'd like to know exactly what are the rules. I mean, we've talked to code enforcement, they've said, "Well, you need a permit, you have a three-day permit, then you have to move it for three days." Well, this trailer has been there for many more than three days, many more than 10 days, many more than a month, and when code enforcement goes to their door, they said, "Well, we just got the trailer this morning." As far as I know right now, I did speak to a supervisor at code enforcement, and apparently there is a registered letter that went out to them about two weeks ago. Nothing's being done. And I guess I just want to know, what exactly are the rules?
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And if you'd have a seat, I'm sure our city manager will have someone from staff get with you before you leave.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' input, please come forward.
Good afternoon, my name is Robert King, and I come back to you today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors, Mr. Manager, Chief Sizemore and Chief Lamb. Over the weekend, my salon hosted a 22-hour cut-athon to raise awareness to the 22 veterans a day that we lose to suicide. I came back today to let you know the great news that we actually raised over $20,000 between Friday and Saturday. And today, we actually got two more donations that pushed us over 21,000. So, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for your good, your thick skin sitting in the dunk tank, which you looked like you had a great time. We're going to invite you back next year to the councilors that were involved. Thank you so much for taking your time. To the citizens, Chief Lamb, thank you for allowing the barber to take care of you. It was truly inspiring. I got really emotional the other day, I'm not going to today, but in today's world, the last two years has just been awful for most of us, for a lot of us. And I watch the news sometimes, and we see nothing but division in the country and this and that. I'm here to tell you, Cape Coral's not divided. Cape Coral came together as a Purple Heart city. We hosted two Gold Star families. We had a USS Cole survivor, we had numerous Iraqi war veterans, and this city came together. We pushed 872 people through that little door between Friday, excuse me, Friday at 10:00 a.m. to Saturday at 8:00 a.m. And we raised a boatload of money for a bunch of people, so we're very excited. The money is off to the actual charities, with the exception of Ida S. Baker. We're going to offer three $1,000 scholarships to their first responders in their JROTC programs this year, meaning fire, nursing, and the JROTC program. And if I could just take one quick minute, I know three minutes is coming up quick. The JROTC program, it was incredible. They were there to help direct traffic, direct people in the parking lot, knowing what to do. And a few of the students or cadets took it upon themselves to walk into signs in one day, and the commander asked for little white corrugated signs with a 22 on it. They stood at the street corner, and they just waved those signs, and those group of kids collected over $1,000 in donations that we would not have had if it wasn't for that thought process. So that just gives you an idea of what future Marines and soldiers and sailors can do when they put their heads together. But again, I just wanted to come here and thank Cape Coral as a city. It makes me very proud to be part of it. This city has been great to my family and I, and we look to many more years. And just a hint of what we're going to do next year, we want to do a collaboration with a bunch of salons in Big John's Plaza, put it under a tent. Mr. Mayor, you and I had a brief conversation, we're going to have more, but we want to raise $100,000 next year and have somebody donate a home for a wounded veteran or a combat-related veteran in our city. So that's my goal next year, and I invite all of you to come along for the ride. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Mr. King, I just wanted to say thank you for what you did. It was an honor to participate that particular evening, and any help that you need from me for next year, you just reach out, I'll be there for you. All right, seeing no other discussion, we will move on to item 9A is our consent agenda. Open up consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, could I please actually pull item 10?
Item 10?
Sure. I'd make a motion to approve the balance of the agenda. Second.
All right. Councilmember, she's not here. I got Councilmember Nelson, so I'm assuming. Any other council members that are wanting to pull any items? Okay, so we're going to, the motion is to approve the remaining items except for item 10. Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll on that, please?
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, Councilmember Long, you have the floor for item 10.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, I was told that there was a representative from Comcast here available for a few questions today. I believe up here, right? Is that where they typically, either one?
You can come to the podium here in the center.
Hello, I'm Jen Boyett, Senior Manager of External Affairs for Comcast.
Awesome. Thanks so much for being here. First of all, I want to thank you guys, your team getting together with staff to bring this forward. I think it's a great step forward for internet service for residents of the North Cape. I did have just a couple of quick questions. I believe they're relatively easy, straightforward. Can you define broadband and other cable-related services as it's written in the contract?
Sure. Broadband is internet. Other cable-related services would be cable TV, our Xfinity Home brand, Wi-Fi, anything that encompasses that. So what would be coming in would be everything.
All of it? Those are all part of the, so there's not going to be any partitioning of any of those individual services? If you've got one, you've got all of them and vice versa?
Correct. It all comes in on the same line. What you need to break it down is the converter box, the cable box, the modem. That's what makes it something different when it comes into the house.
Okay, perfect. And then the distinction between business and residential, is that, are they both going to be offered as part of this, or would it just be purely residential?
Yes, they will both be offered. Our plant and our network will be available, so if a business comes in, they can get, you know, business internet, different speeds, and then houses will be able to get it too.
Okay, yeah, because my question related to that, I guess, currently, because there's some limited service up there with Comcast, I guess some citizens have raised an issue that I guess they've been approached, that they were only able to get a certain speed threshold through Comcast if they were to be signed up to the business line. So I just wanted to make sure that there's not going to be any distinction there between what's offered under this agreement and...
You do, there are different speeds for business and residential. You do have to qualify as a business to get those speeds. Residential speeds are plenty. You can get over a gig service with us now. Businesses sometimes need more. We can get up to 10 gigs on a business line. So if you're just a business that works out of your home, you don't need 10 gigs. That's for big businesses who have multiple computers, et cetera. So there is a speed difference, but you would be able to get either depending on what your needs are.
Okay, and that kind of falls into my next question, then. The infrastructure that's being put in here technically would offer the ability to have up to one gig?
Correct, yes. Over that. We're doing over one gig at the moment.
Right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Cosdine.
Thank you, Mayor. Pardon my ignorance on the terms for technology, but we're talking about fiber internet versus cable internet. Is that correct?
It's a mix of both. It's a fiber backbone, and sometimes there's coax to the house. It depends on what materials we have available at the time, but it is a fiber backbone, so it's both.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other discussions? I don't see anything. Do we have a motion to approve item 10 on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve item 10 of the consent agenda.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Item 9B is personnel actions. We have Resolution 261-21. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Council, County Baron Assistant City Manager, filling in. This is a position that is currently located in our IT department, and we're moving it over to Parks and Rec. We brought this up during the budget discussion. This is a position that will be focusing specifically on rec-trac and utilizing that particular software program to its fullest potential. So that position is being moved out of IT and into Parks and Rec, and both departments concur on that move.
Motion to approve Resolution 261-21.
Second.
Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item two is Resolution 265-21. Madam Assistant City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This resolution establishes a custodial supervisor position. This is directly related to the city's involvement with the charter school system, where we are assuming the responsibility for the custodial services that are being provided to the schools. We're adding, I believe, about 15 or 16 additional custodians that will be working out at the schools. We have about 10 or 12 that work currently at the city. With that many additional custodians, we really do have a need for a custodial supervisor so that we'll have some supervision on both sides of the fence there. So this person will be responsible for supervising the operations both at the charter school and also at the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Cosdine.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the portion of this position will be charged back to the schools?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any discussions. Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Hold on.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9E is follow-up items from city management. E1 is water quality. Madam Assistant City Manager?
We'll have someone up here in just a moment to give you an update on the water quality.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michael Chisen, interim Public Works Director. As it relates to the bubble curtain, we're still in a holding pattern. We are awaiting the Army Corps to release the permit. We did confirm with them that the report from the testing went from the parties that need to be over to National Marine Fisheries. I did confirm with National Marine Fisheries that they completed their review and their documentation. It is now working its way up through their legal department to issue the biological opinion. So we are heading towards the finish line, and we are hopeful that there are no issues in the legal review, and that once that is complete, the Corps will be able to issue the permit. We have been coordinating with the contractor that's manufacturing the bubble curtains. We have already submitted all the applications to LCEC. They have asked us our order of installation for the electrical services. We told them to work from the north to the south, as the saltwater comes up from the south. So we believe we're lined up for everything, ready to go. And as far as the installation aspect, all the dive equipment has been delivered. Staff is trained, ready to go. We actually utilized the dive staff last week at the Jakita Lock to do some removal of some issues that caused it to go down, so we're very confident in our ability to do the underwater work, so we're just waiting on the permit.
Thank you. Could you also, do you have an update on the lonesome policy that was released by the Army Corps engineers this week?
I do not. Just what was in the memo from Maya.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for...
If there's anything specific, we can get you the answers for that.
Thank you. Any other questions from Mr. O'Chison? Thank you, sir. Item 10 is ordinances and resolution. 10A, ordinance 89-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 89-21, An Ordinance Amending the City of Cape Coral Official Zoning District Map of All Property Within the Limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as the west half of the southwest quarter, less the west 320 feet thereof, and the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter, Section 16 Township 44 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein. From single-family residential to commercial corridor zone, property is located at 2301 Southwest Pine Island Road, providing severability and an effective date.
Madam City Clerk, I just have one question before we move forward. In my notes here, it says this item cannot be heard until after 5:00 p.m.
Your Honor, that reference is for item 29121. There must be an error in the script.
Okay, all right. Mr. Struvey?
Excuse me, Mayor, I believe we need to be sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is a quasi-judicial.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, provide testimony, must be sworn in. Please stand.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. For the record, Mike Struvey, Planning Team Coordinator with the City Planning Division. My credentials are in file with the City Clerk's office. This case is a privately initiated rezoning request. We have had a change of ownership since this case originally went to the hearing examiner. The new owner did submit a new, or revised rezoning application, so all the proper paperwork has been filed for tonight's hearing. The owner is CCTC, the owner LLC, represented by Avalon Engineering. The request before you this evening is to rezone a site of about 101 acres from the single-family residential to the commercial corridor zoning district. This property is located at 2301 Southwest Pine Island Road. This slide shows an aerial of the subject property outlined in orange. It's vacant. You notice the property has a considerable amount of frontage along Pine Island Road and is located directly north, if you will, from Saddlewood Lane Extension. A little bit of background on this case, again, the area of the site is 101 acres, except for a number of platted lots located along the northern boundary of the site. Most surrounding sites tend to be relatively large by Cape Coral standards, and by that I mean having areas of four acres or greater. Adjacent uses include vacant sites, scattered single-family homes to the north, and a mix of non-residential uses to the east and to the west and south. And this rezoning is being sought to bring the new zoning to the commercial corridor zoning district into consistency with the Pine Island Road District Future Land Use This is the future land use map showing that the site has a Pine Island Road District Future Land Use classification. Sites to the north, shown here in yellow, have a single-family Future Land Use classification. This is the current zoning map showing that the site has R1 zoning. Commercial corridor, CC zone sites are indicated in the light pink. And the site to the immediate west, which is indicated on this slide by an orange color, is owned by FPNL and has institution... is owned by FPNL and has institutional zoning. And the proposal before you this evening again is to rezone the site from the R1 district to the commercial corridor district. Staff has analyzed this request based on Section 3.4.6 of the Land Development Code. We've also looked at our comprehensive plan for consistency with comprehensive plan policies and goals, and also reviewed the Pine Island Corridor master plan as part of our analysis. Our analysis here is summarized in the next couple of slides. The commercial corridor district does allow for a variety of uses, which includes multifamily, commercial uses, even light industrial uses. Properties adjacent to this site include a variety of uses besides vacant parcels and, in addition to that, include an electric substation to the west, a fraternal club use, which is the German-American social club to the east, and again scattered, single-family homes to the north of the rezoned area. The site is large and has good depth. That's important because the adequate, or the large area of the site means that the potential exists for designing a project while minimizing impacts on surrounding properties, particularly those existing single-family uses located to the north of the subject site. The city does have regulations that help promote compatibility when commercial sites are developed, and those include landscape buffers, screening, lighting, and architectural standards for both commercial buildings and now multifamily buildings. This site could be developed with either multifamily units, with commercial uses, or with a mix of both. That's what the zoning allows. And as the city has a deficiency in commercial development and multifamily units, development of this site could reduce shortfalls that exist in one or potentially both categories. The site does have centralized utilities that are available to the site by extension. As I mentioned earlier, this site has a good bit of frontage along Pine Island Road, about 1,000 feet of frontage. The requested CC district is the only zoning district that's consistent with the Pine Island Road future land use classification. The request is consistent with policies in our comprehensive plan that we go into some detail in analyzing in our staff report, and the request is consistent with the Pine Island Road Corridor master plan that showed this site as a potential mixed-use village. Staff is recommending approval of this rezoning request. The hearing examiner did review this case and on, or following the February 28th hearing, recommended approval of this rezone. Prior to the hearing examiner hearing, we had received one phone call and one email in support of this application, one phone call and one email in opposition, and I'll stand by in case you have questions for me later.
Thank you. I now open public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 89-21? Please come forward.
Good evening. Linda Miller with Avalon Engineering, representing the property owner on ZA 21-15. I'd like to thank Mike Struvey for his presentation this evening. He went through all of the information that I wanted to state tonight. I just wanted to let you know that this rezoning will convert 101 acres from a residential zoning district to a mixed-use zoning district that will allow for either multifamily residential and a wide variety of commercial, including retail, office, service, and restaurant uses. The CC zoning district, as Mike mentioned, is the only compatible zoning district with the Pine Island Road District. Right now, the site is inconsistent with zoning and land use and is not developable with the zoning that is on there right now and would require this rezoning. The zoning is being requested is consistent with adjacent property owners, as Mike showed you a map of that, and the application was submitted in accordance with the City Land Development Code and is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. We request your approval of this request and stand by to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 89-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance?
Motion to approve 89-21?
Second.
Any council discussion?
I have one question. Once this is approved, the land use and zoning change, they do not have to come back before us, right? To show us what they're going to build and get approved?
That's correct, assuming that they can, that the developer, eventual developer submits a site plan that can meet all city requirements. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costa?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 91-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 91-21, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as Unit 24, Block 1068, Lots 1 through 40, Block 1154, Lots 1 through 40, and Block 1073, Lots 1 through 15, and 30 through 40, Cape Coral subdivision, from professional office to residential multifamily low zone. Property located between Cultural Park Boulevard South to the east, southeast Ninth Street to the south, southeast Sixth Court to the west, and southeast Seventh Street to the north, providing severability and an effective date. The second and final public hearing will be December 1st, 2021.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony, please be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Daltry?
Good evening. For the record, Wyatt Daltry, planning team coordinator of the city's planning division. My credentials may be obtained at the City Clerk's office. This is a city-initiated rezone involving 12.71 acres for blocks 1068, 1073, and 1154, from professional zoning to residential multifamily low zoning. These properties are just north of City Hall, north and west of City Hall, in central Cape Coral, just west of Cultural Park Boulevard, on southeast Seventh, Eighth, Seventh and Eighth Streets, Eighth Terrace, and Ninth Street. This map series indicates the properties in question. It's two entire blocks and about two-thirds of a third block. As you can see, on the left is the aerial map, which indicates that much of the subject properties are, many of the subject properties are developed. We'll get into that in a little bit more detail later on in this presentation. The current future land use of the subject properties is multifamily, and this was recently changed, a couple months ago, through, through action, I believe it was ordinance 50-21, from commercial professional to multifamily residential. So essentially, this is a follow-up to that land use amendment process. The request, the rezone on the left shows the current zoning map. The properties are professional office in light blue, and the proposal is to change them to multifamily consistent with the land use, as shown in Brown. History, this is the core of the city's central conceptual area, which was established between 2000 and 2002. The purpose of the city's center was to attract office uses that would work well with a government center. Government center being, of course, City Hall, the post office, the county annex building. The idea was to create an employment center in central Cape Coral fairly analogous to what you see in many downtown areas. Downtown Fort Myers being a perfect example, where you have the government offices as kind of the anchor and then engineering firms, attorney's offices, those sort of professional uses that are ancillary to governance being nearby. And then the restaurants and other uses that would support those uses. So following with that, the property was changed to commercial professional in 2003. Properties were rezoned to professional in early 2009. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we just recently changed back to multifamily two months, almost two months ago. I'll get a little bit of history as to why we had moved away from the city's central concept. When the professional, when the professional zoning was applied to the area in 2009, several duplexes were already constructed in this area, which had hurt assemblage opportunities. It's the story of Cape Coral. In order to get larger, consistent developments, office developments, you need to assemble properties. If half of those properties already have duplexes, you're looking at extreme increase in costs, dealing with different, and sometimes multiple property owners, there's delays. And as a result, it really never took off. In fact, 27 of the 50 subject properties are developed with multifamily residences and duplexes. So with the exception of the eastern third of Block 1073, which you saw on the map series, no redevelopment efforts have been proposed on these three blocks. There's been some redevelopment efforts proposed on the third block, which is why we took that out. In analyzing this, we reviewed policy, policies in our future land use element, more particularly the commercial node criteria. And we found that it would only be consistent, the commercial professional was only consistent with three of the eight commercial and industrial land use citing criteria. That's why we, that was really the underpinning of why we proposed changing the properties to multifamily back in September. So again, we're seeing really more of a push that this is really more appropriate for multifamily uses. This is directly consistent with the goal of the housing element, which looks for greater differentiation of housing types and tenures within Cape Coral. This property had a minimal frontage on Cultural Park Boulevard, which makes it a weak candidate for commercial and office development. We also analyzed through Section 3.4.6 of Land Development Code, and there's really six criteria we look at. And I'll just run through these very quickly. This is in our case report, if you want, to take a more substantial just review of these criteria. First one is whether the proposed zoning district is consistent with the comp plan. It certainly is. RML is consistent with multifamily. Whether the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district will be compatible with existing uses. As we saw in the aerial, existing uses have duplexes, clearly consistent with the multifamily zoning designation. Same with compatibility with existing and potential uses within these three blocks. Again, we have a lot of existing, pre-existing multifamily, so a rezone to multifamily, therefore, is pretty consistent on its face. Whether the proposed zoning district will serve a community need or broader public purpose, and there's a well-documented need for additional multifamily residential uses, as we have had two rental studies in recent years that show a deficiency in multifamily units within Cape Coral. The characteristics of proposed rezone area are suitable for the uses permitted. Again, the rezone area is on local roads. Half of, over half of the properties have developed multifamily. And then finally, whether a zoning district other than the RML, in this case, will create fewer potential adverse impacts. And really, the only other zoning district for this site would be the RMM, which allows higher densities, doesn't permit duplexes, which, as I mentioned in the previous points, there's plenty of duplexes there. So we feel the RML is the best fit for these, for these properties. To conclude, this rezone request would provide additional opportunities for residential diversity in Cape Coral, and actually, more importantly, would bring 27 structures into conformance with the land use and zoning designations. Right now, they're, they're legal non-conformities, which have impacts as far as expansion of those uses. It's like act of God or fire, you know, the replacement of the structure in case something like that would occur. The proposed amendment is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. This was presented to the hearing examiner on October 5th, and it was found to, it was a recommendation of approval. This is the first of two public hearings, so I'll be coming back before you on December 1st for final adoption. Staff recommends approval of this request. We've received no correspondence. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I now open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 91-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve ordinance 92-21?
We don't need a motion. This is a two-meeting process.
Can I ask a question?
Our final public hearing will be held on December 1st.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Wyatt, the last one that we did in the Cultural Park area, did that go to the state for approval?
It did, yes, but this...
Did it come back yet?
It did, yes, with, and in pass of flying colors, no issues.
Okay, so then it would all stay consistent? That was just my question.
Correct. And in fact, it was adopted on September 22nd, and generally, there's a two-month period where they do their review, and then there's a challenge period. So the challenge period ends, I think, over the weekend, so...
Okay, so we're good. All right.
Any other discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 92-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 92-21, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as Lots 1 through 7, Block 1146, Unit 22, Cape Coral, from professional to residential multifamily medium zone. By rezoning property described as Lots 8 through 10, Block 1146, Unit 22, Cape Coral, from residential multifamily low to residential multifamily medium zone. Property is located at 816 Southeast Eighth Place, providing severability and an effective date.
Go ahead, Chad. I'll now, we're at 92-21?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. This is a, now open a public hearing?
No, I was gonna...
Staff?
Sworn in.
That's not on my for 92-21, but anyone that's going to be participating with ordinance 92-21, please raise your hand and be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilor. For the record, Chad Boyko, principal planner with the city's planning division. This is ordinance 92-21. This is a privately initiated rezone application. The owners is Clum World Trading LLC. The location is 816 Southeast Eighth Place. The size of the property is a little over one acres in size. It is in the urban services infill area, so utilities are available to the site. And then the applicant requests a rezone from multifamily residential low, RML and professional office to residential multifamily medium. Here's an aerial map of the property outlined in yellow. It is, right now, an undeveloped piece of property. It is just a little ways north of City Hall. The surrounding area to the north, to the east, and to the west is a combination of undeveloped properties and duplexes and single-family homes. And then to the south and to the southeast, you have the, sort of the northeast or the northwest portions of these, the Sky Industrial Park. It's a collection of around 10 parcels. The site was recently amended to the multifamily residential land use by city council, I want to say around four to five months ago. And then the applicant is seeking the change in order to build multifamily units on this property. As you know, the RMM district does not allow for single-family homes or duplexes and only allows for the true multifamily development of three, three units or more within one building. So the current zoning that it has right now is, most of the site is owned professional office, and then there is a couple of parcels, a couple of lots that is part of this parcel that are zoned multifamily residential low. And then the proposal is to take the whole block to the RMM district. The surrounding zoning to the north and to the west is that RML district. To the east, you have a combination of RML and professional office, and then to the south, you have industrial zoning. So we conducted our analysis per the, per the Land Development Code. There are six sort of standards that we look at for rezones within this. The first is whether the district is compatible with the comprehensive plan. The RMM district is one of two zoning districts that is compatible with the multifamily residential land use, the other one being the RML district, which a portion of this property currently has. The second standard is whether the full range of uses allowed in the proposed district is compatible with the existing uses in the area. Staff finds that the RMM district allows for residential units with a maximum density of 25 units per acre. No single-family homes or duplexes. Staff finds that the proposed zoning would be compatible. It would actually provide a little bit of a buffer, a transitional buffer from the industrial zoning that is to the south to the, to the residential zoning that is to the north, where you have a combination of duplexes and single-family homes. So you would have sort of a decrease in intensity from the industrial to multifamily to lower density of residential. The, a maximum of three units would be allowed on this site. I want to say that the, with the RML district, you'd be looking at around 19 units. So it's a little increase of 11 units on that site. And we mentioned earlier that the surrounding area to the north and to the west is single, low-density residential, sort of single families and duplex development. The third standard is whether the range of uses allowed in the district will be compatible with existing potential uses. Staff finds that this would allow for the multifamily development there. You could see some commercial development located to the east on those sites... You could see some commercial development located to the east on those sites that are zoned professional office. And once again, we think that the multifamily and the professional office will have a nice sort of cohesion there in that area, along with some of that industrial zoning that is to the south. The fourth standard is whether the zoning district will serve a community need or purpose. City of Cape Coral has a well documented need for multifamily housing. This, staff finds that this rezone does allow for some more true traditional multifamily to be provided perhaps as sort of workforce housing for some of the surrounding businesses that are in the area to the south. The fifth standard is the characteristics of the rezone area are suitable for the uses allowed. Staff finds that with the current character of that neighborhood being a combination of industrial, commercial, and residential, the proposed multifamily zoning will be compatible with those uses. And then the last standard is whether the district, whether a district other than the one requested is more appropriate for this use. Staff finds that because the site is over an acre and you do have some higher intensity commercial uses to the south, staff finds that the RMM district is compatible for this area. And not allowing duplexes will be a nice sort of residential diversity in this area. We also found that the zoning is compatible with the future land use element of our comprehensive plan and also the housing element, which aims to provide a more diverse and well-rounded housing stock within Cape Coral. And city staff recommends approval of the rezone request. The Cape Coral Hearing Examiner also recommended approval of this. And we did have one letter of opposition that was received prior to the Hearing Examiner hearing. I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. I know, public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 92-21? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Zirkus, President BJ, I'm consulting here on behalf of the owner and the applicant of this parcel. Chad did a great job in presenting this case. I just want to remind you back when we, I came in front of you representing this particular parcel for a land use change, I told you it was going to be workforce housing and that we would come back with RMM, not RML, so that we wouldn't be building additional single-family homes and duplexes, which I think we all agree we have plenty of. So this is a commitment, fulfillment of that commitment to come back with RMM zoning, which will allow for development. I do not believe we're going to be able to get to 30 units that are allowed on this, on this site. By the time we take care of parking, stormwater, and amenities, we'll be probably something less than 30, but we will get a significant number of apartments on here. And it'll be a unique opportunity for us to build some waterfront workforce housing in the city of Cape Coral. That will serve, I believe, not just the industrial park, but two major employers in the city. Number one, the city itself, it's close enough to City Hall, and then Cape Coral Hospital, another big employer within the city. Based on staff's presentation and the understanding of the application in the letters that we submitted, we respectfully request your approval of this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 92-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 92-21?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 68-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 68-21, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, by creating Article 9, Naming of City Assets, Providing Purpose, Definitions, Policy, and Procedure for Naming or Renaming of City Assets or Commemorative Work, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to, it says here, staff comments, but I believe Councilmember Welsh brought this ordinance forward, so I'll turn it over to him first.
Thank you, Mayor. We kind of went over a lot of this in the workshop when I brought it forward. I had some comments from fellow council on making some changes to the ordinance. And I went back to the city attorney, made those changes. And I believe what I brought forward today reflects exactly that, just what we all liked and disliked in it. And I believe it's ready to go. Does anyone have any questions for me on it, I guess would be the, would be my concern there?
Councilmember Tate?
How do we determine that it would be a naming the city asset for at least six months after the date of passing? Is that what everybody wanted, or, I didn't quite understand that.
Well, I originally had put two years in there, and then there was some discussion on if there should be any timeframe at all or not. And I still feel strongly that there should be a timeframe. And I think six months is a relatively short amount of time, considering when we are naming something after someone, they probably have put years and years of service into the city. So another six months isn't unwarranted. And it would also give some time to allow the shock appeal to kind of wear off. So I left six months in there because I feel strongly about it. If that is not what council wants, I'm not going to hold this up any longer if they so choose to remove it, but.
Okay, and then my next question is on page four, the commemorative work. So where commemorative work requests may be initiated, do I understand that somebody would donate a commemorative work and then they'd be responsible for maintaining it as well? And if so, is that how we do it at Formulco? With the statues that have been presented and stuff, do they maintain them?
So I have it in here that if someone donates a commemorative work, they.
Yeah, they're required to.
To maintain it for the first year, and then after that, it becomes a city asset.
I just didn't understand that. I mean, if somebody, is that how we do it at Formulco? Like when we brought the statue in, or if somebody's donated the artwork? Did they maintain it, or do we maintain it?
I believe there are certain organizations that are responsible for maintaining those. Carrie, Carrie, is she here?
She left because I called and asked her about it. I don't see her anywhere, but.
I would have to, I would have to check with her, but I think in most instances, the organization that donates it also is responsible for doing some of the maintenance on it.
And so they are responsible for the maintenance? Okay.
I'll let somebody else in there. I may have some other questions.
Okay. I just, Madam City Clerk?
I just wanted to remind council that we need to open the public hearing as well.
Okay. So before we move any further from there, I'll now open public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 68-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. And the only few questions I had, I thought when we discussed the timeframe for, I think you had two years originally, I thought the timeframe, we were going to take that out of the equation. That was my understanding. But if it wasn't the case, then, you know, the rest of council can weigh in on that topic. And I guess one of the elements for naming as far as under E, time limits, requirements for upkeep may also be contingent for naming purposes. So I guess that's why Councilmember Tate had asked that about, about the other agreement that we utilize. And I see that you added, I think, another one of the other concerns we had were the 200 signature. And I think you added in there the proof of residency.
Right.
Because that was a concern, but it looks like you've addressed that. And that's all I see, a few things that stood out to me. The big thing was the six-month time limit that you put in there. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I know we had a lengthy discussion on the timeframe, and I know that none of us agreed on the two-year thing. Six months, by the time it would come back before council, or anything would be initiated, is probably reasonable. I don't have a problem with removing it, however, but to me, on any timetable, six months seems fair. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate?
May I have a ask, oh, sorry?
Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Nelson?
Me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I would be willing, you know, to make a motion to accept this with taking out the time restriction. And here's why. Although I agree with what Councilmember Hayden said regarding the timeframe and, you know, six months it would take to get before council, I would like to leave that fluid. I think it's important because we don't know what situations will come up. And I just would really like to take the time constraint out of it because I want to keep this, I want council to have the ability to keep this fluid, you know, pending on the situation. So I'd be willing to make that motion if we could remove the time constraint. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, a motion was made. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Councilmember Tate?
I just had one more question, and I did call Ms. Rennie today to ask her about this. The renaming of a city asset is discouraged. I understand that there may be some time in the future that that could happen, but it did happen at the Storm's football field, and it happened for no reason at all. So this gives you some specific criteria. I would not want to see a city asset name changed unless it was the same reason that we had up here with vulgarity, racist, something like that. But other than that, once you name a field or a park or something, it should stay in perpetuity. So this is a little more detailed, but I just wanted to make my feelings known about that because I know when we did that, it was very hurtful to the people that we did it for, and it was not handled very well.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I think this ordinance actually, I know the situation you're talking about because I had a conversation with him at the parade. And I think this ordinance helps protect that from happening. So I think that's a good addition for, because it shouldn't have happened to that man who did so much for youth football, and I won't belabor it, but that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as, like I said, I'm okay with removing the six months, but I would have liked to have heard from a few other council members' opinion on that before the motion was made to change the ordinance as it is because I believe that, I had consensus from the person who made the second that he would be willing to do the six months. And then he also seconded to take it out, so it's just a little confusing to me because I don't want to vote no on this. I would have rather heard from a few others before that motion was made. That's all.
Okay, well, we, you know, we're still having a discussion, and there has been a motion in the second, so we will vote on that particular motion, but I'll leave the floor open for any further discussion. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, as I said, I would be okay with it. Obviously, I seconded for discussion purposes only. So I don't mind hearing from other council members as well.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I'm okay with the six months.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I also would have no issue with the six-month period remaining in the ordinance as written.
Okay.
Put the motion on the floor.
Yeah, correct. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion, and we have a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long? Hold on, I think.
Wait a minute, yeah.
Yeah, I think the motion on the floor is to remove the six months.
That's correct. So either the motion maker has to change their motion, and the second has to agree.
Or we vote on this.
Or we vote on it. If it fails, then we'll entertain another motion.
I think they were confused. I knew what we were doing.
Right, so the current motion is to delete the six-month portion. Nay.
Madam City Attorney?
If I understood, the current motion is to approve the ordinance with the deletion of the six months.
Right.
I thought that, were you the second?
I was the second.
And I thought he said he was fine with that. The second was fine with approving it with the deletion of the six months.
And I also said that I was okay with removing the six months. I seconded it for discussion.
Right.
And when it came to the vote, because I was okay with either one, and.
Right, okay, so the second was okay with that. So what's on your floor right now is, I understand that it is a motion to approve the ordinance as it's written with the deletion of the six months.
Correct.
So if you vote yes, then the, or aye, then the ordinance will be approved with the deletion of the six months. If you vote nay, then, back to the, you know.
Then it goes back.
Then you can further discuss it if you would like.
Correct. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, has anyone voted yet?
Councilmember Hayden?
And his vote was?
Aye.
Okay.
And Long?
And then.
Correct, my vote was nay.
And Councilmember Long was nay?
Yep.
Thank you. I didn't hear your response, so thank you very much.
Continue with the roll, please.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
No.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Nay.
Cosden?
Nay.
Gunter?
Nay.
So that's three ayes and five nays. Motion failed.
Motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Oh, nay.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
So that's seven ayes and one nay. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Move on to ordinance 94-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 94-21, an ordinance amending City of Cape Coral ordinance 74-20 as amended by ordinances 13-21, 46-21, and 87-21, which adopted the City of Cape Coral operating budget, revenues and expenditures, and capital budget for fiscal year 2021 by increasing the total revenues and expenditures by a total of $77,333,140, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. We have before you the fourth budget amendment for fiscal year 21, 2021. This will be the final one as well. Where Florida statute allows us to amend the budget right up through November 30th of each year. In general, this one, you know, recognizes any actions that the city council has taken over the last three months, as well as any cleanup issues that we might need to take in bringing forward any balances that we have, or increasing any revenues that we might have received during the course of the year. Overall, $77 million increase in the overall budget, or 7.16% from Budget Amendment Number Three. Included in this is $70 million of the budget reflects three items, which also accounts for 90.6% of the overall budget. One of those is transferring and creating the Solid Waste Special Revenue Fund. As you'll recall during the discussion of the budget for fiscal year 2022, we had talked about closing down the, one of the funds that is currently solid waste and bringing it into a special revenue fund. We brought it in earlier in fiscal year 2021, primarily because of a GASB statement or Governmental Accounting Standards Board statement that requires us to reclassify some of these funds that used to be trust funds, but they're no longer a trust fund, and it needed to be done in 2021. So this is one of the reasons why we've brought it forward into the current year. The, so, and of course, it's already budgeted the same way in fiscal year 2022, so we'll have some comparativeness going forward. In addition, this also includes the bond that you just recently issued, $29.9 million, which is the GO bond. That's the second tranche of the GO bond that we've issued to date. That's also included, and we also have about $15.5 million in various impact fees for road, police, and fire. These are the additional revenues that we've actually received during the course of the year, and we've applied those to some projects, especially for the roadside, which we'll go over here shortly. In addition, we've received several grants during the course of the last three months. The Edward Bernie Just Grant, Firehouse Sub Grant. We've also received the Drug Enforcement Administration grant of $19,000. In addition, we've received reimbursement for police off-duty overtime of $440,000. We've also trued up the fire service assessment. This is, you know, what we budgeted for and what we actually collected is usually some, usually more than, maybe a little bit more than a 96% that we budget for this. And we're also adjusting the Health and Wellness Fund to actuals per the financial statements. Charter School Services, as was recently discussed on the Custodial Service Supervisor, we're budgeting for the custodial. we're budgeting for the custodial services in the Internal Service Fund. Also, we also had a couple of expenses associated with the taking on the desktop specialists for the charter school. These are some of the things that we've discussed on assuming some of the responsibility and some of the expenses associated with the charter school. And we also needed to put in a updated end firewall for security for IT. And the charter school board approved that as part of their budget amendment as well. We've also recorded the hardship assessments and as well as our city-owned property and these assessments associated with North Two. Land purchases, not least of which is the property across the street, we've had over the last several month, three months, $1.6 million. And we've had a, we needed to add a little bit of support to the parks and rec programs of $147,000. And that's primarily, it's in from the general fund over to the parks programs as we saw a decrease in revenue associated with the park programs. Again, we've created the special revenue fund in fiscal year 21 for the agency fund that was the solid waste fund. We've also identified, recognized the sale of properties for our housing programs, which we do as they occur. Parks and rec programs, again, you heard me just increase the general fund support. For road impact fees, we've recorded an additional $10.1 million in additional road impact fees during the course of the past year. We're also recording what we expect the fee to be or the bill to be for Littleton realignment, the Kismet-Littleton realignment. This was a interlocal agreement that the city council had entered into a couple of years ago, and they have finished the project and will be getting a bill for that. The Old Burnsthor Road, North UEP, we've expanded a number of roads in that particular area, but we're applying road impact fees to those expansions, as well as applying road impact fees for an expansion on Nicholas Parkway West. Public safety impact fees and park impact fees both recorded revenue at a higher rate than what we originally had planned for for fiscal year 21. And those fees have been applied in actually fiscal year 2022. Again, a portion of the GO bond is recorded in the debt service fund to pay the issuance cost, and then we record the remainder of the GO bond in the parks GO bond fund. The, also, we have management costs associated with managing the GO park, the bond projects. We have a number of people that are in other funds, and so we're recording their expenses in the GO bond fund, but we need to be able to cover those. And we're not utilizing the GO bond fund to cover those, so we transfer money in from the general fund to cover those costs. Public works, yes, we have the Cape Coral eastbound turn lane extension. I think you'll recall, we had some discussions about that during our budget workshops, and we're going to be applying the road impact fees to that particular project as well. We also have recording the Nicholas Parkway East access project. And we also are truing up the expenses for the sidewalk crew for operating capital. We also have some projects for the Community Redevelopment Agency. They just recently approved their final budget amendment as well. As part of that and as part of law, they're required to take any excess cash that they have at the end of the year and apply it either towards a specific project, which they've done here for landscape beautification. But at the same time, we're also recording a couple of other projects that they approved over the last six months. Water and Sewer, we're adjusting based on actuals per the financial statements. We're decreasing the overall reserves for Water and Sewer by $2.9 million in health insurance. We saw a decrease in the budget of rates. We forecasted a budget, and then, you know, we saw that the rates were going to be a little bit less than that, so we've adjusted that, as well as for vacancies, decreasing that Internal Service Fund by $4 million. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Now, a public hearing, is anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 94-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion approved?
94-21?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Okay, we'll move on to item 10B, Introductions, Ordinance 96-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title and set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 96-21, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an amended master lease agreement for all charter schools and facilities with the Cape Coral Charter School Authority for the lease of property owned by the City of Cape Coral at 3519 Oasis Boulevard, 3519B Oasis Boulevard, 3507 Oasis Boulevard, 3415 Oasis Boulevard, and 2817 Southwest Third Lane. A copy of the amended lease agreement is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be December 1st, 2021.
Thank you. Any discussion from council or staff? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, Unfinished Business. 11A is follow-up from items for council. There's none listed. 11B, Edison Festival of Light Discussion. We withdrew that from the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. New business, we don't have any listed. Item 13 is reports from the mayor and council. Councilmember Hayden, report.
Yeah, I just want, I was honored to participate in the Veterans Day Parade last week, traveling the parade route and seeing all the families and people there to honor the veterans was heartwarming to say the least. And seeing the faces of the veterans and how much the day meant to them after not having the parade last year. And all the organizations that participated was really fulfilling. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Long, report?
No report.
Councilmember Nelson, report?
Thank you, Mayor. And I echo Councilmember Hayden's comments. The veterans parade was pretty amazing, and being the granddaughter, daughter, and sister of veterans, I was honored and my family was super proud of us. So great job, city. Really quickly, I have been participating a lot in our Horizon Council meetings that deals with economic development throughout Lee County and our region. And I also attended the TDC hosted sort of a looking forward, moving forward in what's going on in terms of marketing Lee County. And so I asked Connie to prepare, print out a PowerPoint for all of you to review at your convenience. But I wanted to respond publicly to an email that we received from one of our amazing local community leaders and business owners to sort of show everybody the methodology of why our tagline to Lee County now is Fort Myers, Islands, Beaches, and Neighborhoods. And in the presentation that was presented to us last week during the luncheon was that in order to get anywhere in Lee County, we look at Lee County as a house. And the entrance to the house is through Fort Myers. So it is very hard and challenging, as you all can imagine, for the tourist development council and tourism development office in Lee County to try to market our region because we have so many different pieces to it. And I know the argument could be made that, well, we're the largest municipality in Lee County, and we should have some type of recognition. But if you read through this presentation and you see sort of the methodology and the branding and the marketing and the surveys that were taken, I actually, I support this. And it all made sense to me when the slide was shown to us about Lee County being a house. And we fly into Fort Myers, RSW is our airport, that's our gateway into Lee County. So other arguments that I've heard, and I've asked the question, and it's my understanding that there's a state statute that won't allow us to figure out exactly how much bed tax is Cape Coral contributing to our tourism and development economy. And the discussions that I've had with John Talmage, who's the Lee County Economic Development Director, is that there is thought and definitely probably proof that because of all the vacation rentals we have in Cape Coral, we probably contribute quite a bit to the bed tax, not just from the Westin and not just from the Dolphin Inn. So I just wanted to share this with all of you. And, you know, please feel free to reach out to John Talmage at Economic Development. Tam Piggott, who is the Deputy Director for Tourism Development for Lee County. Both of those individuals are very open and transparent in terms of, you know, the methodology, all the work that was put into it, the money that was invested in this marketing campaign. And I just wanted all of you to be aware. But I have asked the question about, you know, the bed tax and how much does come out of Cape Coral. And I'm hoping that somehow, some way, we can figure that out with the county. And I did ask John Talmage specifically, you know, I understand there's a Florida statute or something that states that, you know, the county can't break it out that way. We can't, you know, get those bed tax numbers specific for Captiva Island either. So I just wanted to share this. So thank you. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepard, report?
No report.
Councilmember Tate?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank council and the public for coming to Catch the Vision. It was very successful. We had almost 500 people in attendance. Everyone was very excited about the projects, the way we presented them. People took notes, they took pictures, so it was really very successful. I also wanted to thank Linda Biondi and her team because they helped organize the parade with the City of Cape Coral. Our office was happy to host everybody during the beginning of the parade, but it was a huge success. So I wanted to thank everybody for that and Jay Gansey for supplying the vehicles that most of us drove in. Jennifer, as to, or Councilmember Nelson, as to this presentation, it's a work in progress. I think, I know that there is a meeting coming up with several people in the city, and I hope you'll participate. I personally, just looking through the pictures, I don't see a picture of Cape Coral in any of these pictures. I mean, it's a good day, it could be anywhere in Cape Coral, but I don't see any of them. That sort of bothers me. And the word neighborhood is something hard for me to digest because no city is a neighborhood. A neighborhood is kind of like where you live in your little area. But I'm willing to learn more, and I have talked with a couple of members of the TDC. And hopefully, we're going to be getting a seat on this and we'll have a different voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh, report?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just do a quick, I want to say a couple of quick things about the last regular meeting on November 3rd. I was absent. I know that there was a decision made by this council to mark it as inexcused. I've learned that part of that reasoning was I did not officially request to be excused via in writing through the mayor's assistant. So there are a lot of citizens that contacted me and asked me what was wrong or why or anything like that. So just for the citizens out there, it was a mistake that I made. And looking back through the meetings that I missed, that was only the second voting meeting that I missed, and the, all the other ones were meetings that were added pretty much to the schedule or they were non-voting meetings. So with that being said, I'm here. And I do have my schedule set for the whole year now that we've approved it, and there shouldn't be any problems with that. I am looking forward to Saturday night with the big old bonfire as the concert series for Cape Coral. I want to say that usually it was Coconut Fest that we would have at the Sunsplash Parks. And I'm just glad that we're able to get out and do these special events again now that we've gotten through this pandemic, and I'm looking forward to the show. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you. I attended the first meeting of the redistricting commission this week. It's a good group of people, and we did, we appointed a good group. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick on my, on my report. November 3rd through the 5th, I attended Florida League of Cities Annual Legislative Conference in conjunction with the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors meeting. On November 8th, I attended the American City-County Exchange Seminar and Luncheon over in Fort Myers. Also, that particular day, I attended the Cape Coral Mayor Scholarship Foundation Campaign kickoff. And also, on November 9th, I attended Catch the Vision at Cape Christian. Councilmember Tate, like always, you and your crew and staff did an excellent job, like always. So thank you for all your hard work with that. Also, November 10th, attended the last and final Charter Review Commission meeting. I believe they will be coming back before this council to give their recommendation on December 1st. So we will be hearing the results of their commission. Also, on November 11th, participated in the Veterans Day Parade. Again, I think it was the year that we've had the most participants, not only in the parade, but attending the parade. So I just want to thank Linda and all her staff for another great job that they did putting that parade together. Also, on the 11th, I attended the Cape Coral Construction Industry Dinner Meeting at Palmetto Pines Country Club. November 12th, I attended the Second Annual Saving Lives, One Clip at a Time. You heard from Mr. King this evening, great, great event that he put on, I think, last year. He got a little over $5,000 in contributions. And as you heard tonight, he's well over $21,000. So a great, great event for a great cause there. And I didn't get too waterlogged in the duct tape. But I did get knocked down several times. Attended the Southwest Florida League of Cities meeting on November 12th at the Casia Bell Resort on Sanibel. Also, on the 12th, I attended the, I'm sorry, on the 13th, I was a guest speaker at the Guardian Angels Golf Tournament that was held on Saturday at Royal T, another great event for special pops. Great to see all the participation there for a great cause as well. As far as the report that Councilmember Nelson gave us tonight on the TDC, I'm also concerned, like Councilmember Tate said, you know, I didn't see one picture from Cape Coral, and I didn't see one word that mentioned Cape Coral. So that's a little concerning to me. I will say that we do not have a position on that particular board right now. I am working with County Commissioner Ruane to try, hopefully, after the first of the year, where we can get a participant on that board. So we have a voice that hopefully in the future, we'll be able to make sure that Cape Coral is recognized somewhere along the way. And I think that's extremely important. You know, we do donate a lot of bed tax. I just want to make sure that we're, number one, represented, and number two, we get our fair share of recognition. Lastly, real quick, Madam Assistant City Manager, one thing that I would like to get sometime in the near future. I know a couple of years ago, probably before a lot of these council members that are here today were serving, but we had had a list of surplus properties that was recognized throughout the city. And my recollection was that we were going to put these surplus properties out in phases because we didn't want to flood the market at any given time. So we were only putting so many of those out on the MLS. So the information that I would like to possibly have from staff is where we are, how many of those properties have we sold? I know we've gotten some reports in the past. And also, how many more that we have identified as surplus that we were going to be putting on, putting those properties out on the market? And what type of timeline do we have to get those out there? And I think that would be good information, especially for the council members that weren't here prior to that.
I'll be happy to take care of that.
And that's all the report that I have.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
I'm sorry, two things. One, the public records, I did put in a public records request with our city clerk for the TDC for 10 years' worth of revenue and what we've generated. And I know it's not impossible. I think they are working on it. And I've also asked for the rules and the regulations that were- And I've also asked for the rules and the regulations that were created to put the board together when we lost our seat and how we can possibly gain it back. So she is working on that, so we don't all work on the same project. And second, Mayor, in the old, old days, when you walked into the door, we used to have a list of properties that we had available, because we had so many. It was very, very up to date.
Okay, well, I'm sure staff will be getting that information.
I'm sure we did, though. It's very archaically.
And then I think that'll be good information for the new council members.
That was when they were selling like hotcakes, right?
Is that when Jesus loaned a few of them? Okay, I'm just making sure.
People were giving back to us like, yeah, the candy, yeah.
Okay. Madam City Attorney, report?
I have no report.
And Madam Assistant City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a couple of items. The first one is related to the Committee of the Whole that is scheduled for December the eighth. We have quite a list of items that we want to discuss with council at that Committee of the Whole. The meeting is scheduled to begin at three o'clock, and if conversation goes for a while, discussion goes for a while. We may not get out of here until eight o'clock. So we would like to make a request that council consider starting that Committee of the Whole meeting at two o'clock rather than three o'clock.
And if I'm not mistaken, that's our last Committee of the Whole meeting before our hiatus.
Yes, that will be the last Committee of the Whole meeting for two thousand twenty-one.
And then you're going to move the shade meeting, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
We have a shade meeting on that day as well?
We have a shade meeting related to the security issue that we had discussed before, and you had wanted the Utilities Director to come in and talk to you a little bit about the, the facilities.
Okay, so what time will we have our shade meeting at? One o'clock?
We can reschedule that maybe to the next month.
Okay, so we're going to reschedule?
If, if that's okay with council. It's not, I don't think anything pressing, but.
Okay. All right. Madam City Clerk?
I have in my records and posted on our website, which I'm happy to update, but I have the shade meeting for the last regular meeting date, the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth?
At three o'clock.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that if you are changing that date, that it's just noticed, I'll notice it to the public.
And when?
Yeah, this is actually just for the Committee of the Whole on the eighth, so the fifteenth should be okay.
Okay, so we're not making any changes there to the shade meeting? And the only change is we want to come in one hour instead of three at two o'clock?
That would be our request, yes.
Okay. And do we have a consensus where that's okay, or do we have any objection? We're good? Okay, do we need a, Madam City Attorney, do we need a, a motion for that?
Well, wait, I like Tom's idea. If it's going to go till eight o'clock, can we move it to one o'clock? I mean, how long a day are we talking? I'd rather do it during the day day.
I think there was many, many items that I had saw.
So that's what I'm thinking, too. Oh, you can't do one. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think Councilmember Costin can do one.
If it's better for everyone, I can just arrive as soon as I can. It would be around two.
Two o'clock, okay. All right. Two o'clock it is?
You can just do it by consensus, or you can do it by motion?
Okay.
Motion to change the meeting, is that what we need?
Okay.
Motion to change our meeting to two o'clock.
So that would be the Committee of the Whole meeting on the December eighth?
December eighth.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long? Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
And then just one last thing, for those of you who are attending the big old bonfire. If you have not heard Caroline Jones sing, you will be very impressed. She actually was an opening act for Jimmy Buffett and the Eagles up at Camping World Orlando when I went to that concert, and she is very good. So I just wanted to let you know. And if you were hesitating and going, I would definitely encourage you to go. She's very good.
Okay. Time and place of future meetings. We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, December first, two thousand twenty-one, at four thirty PM here in council chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Aye.